...to order and stand for a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting tonight. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 28th meeting?
I will make a motion to approve minutes submitted.
A second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, so item number three on the menu, on the agenda. I go back to my restaurant room, sorry, everybody. Okay, so it's a proclamation. It's from the National School of Choice Week. I can read a little bit about it, but what they're doing is they're issuing, they want to issue a proclamation to, I mean, it provides an opportunity to shine a positive spotlight on the K-12 education options available for children and families for the town of Stafford. I guess they sent them out last year, more than 684 mayors and county mayors, along with 30 governors, issued proclamations recognizing National School Choice Week, which in 2018 will feature more than 32,000 events across America. So, they're asking us if we would want to be part of the proclamation, and we're looking at it right there. I don't know if you need a minute to look at it.
I remember.
I'm good.
You're good? So, I have a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion to approve, Stafford.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion on this one?
No.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, sounds like a pretty good thing.
Yep.
Alrighty, Stafford Conservation Commission. Do we have a proposal from you that we're going to be listening to?
I have extra copies of our letter, if anybody wants. My name is Kitty Sully, I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission. And we're going to read a letter that we drafted during our special December meeting. This is Arlene Avery, they're going to help me, and Brian Z. We just say Brian Z, no, that guy Brian.
That's right, that's all you need to say.
So, we drafted this on December 13th, 2017. The subject is Dennis Pond and the proposed golf course. Dear Selectmen, we of the Stafford Conservation Commission want to persuade you, the Stafford Board of Selectmen, to protect Dennis Pond to preserve it as natural and undeveloped state as possible. To this end, we request no permanent sports installations on the eastern slope of the property, including the proposed disc golf course. We ask that passive use be preserved such as fishing, hiking, swimming, picnicking, wildlife viewing, and just being able to relax in the youth facility. Our reasons are as follows. One, the proposed disc golf course or any development on the eastern slope of Dennis Pond is in conflict with our mission of promoting sound land use, increasing public awareness of ecology, promoting community responsibility, and awareness of conservation needs. Two, the August 1999 Environmental Review Team report clearly states that the eastern slope of the Dennis Pond property should remain untouched other than a loop trail at the edge of the slope. The study concludes that the Dennis Pond property should remain as undeveloped and natural as possible. Three, citizen support. On June 2nd, 2016, the first selectman was presented with a petition to block the building of a disc golf course at Dennis Pond with over 100 signatures that were gathered in the period of one holiday weekend. This petition was circulated by a private citizen. On October 16th, 2017, a forum was held by the selectmen. The Conservation Commission members observed that residents in the area and adjacent areas are clearly concerned about the ecology being damaged by the building of a disc golf course. Additionally, residents were concerned about the traffic impacts due to the narrow access of Ice House Road and the additional narrow winding access on Wellington Avenue. Another concern was the noise level. On November 2017, the Conservation Commission circulated a petition with the aid of private citizens to convene a town meeting to designate the Dennis Pond property as Dennis Pond Park and Nature Preserve. That included keeping Dennis Pond as natural and undeveloped as possible, as was stated in the Environmental Review Team report. The circulators gathered over 187 signatures. 147 signatures were delivered to the first selectman's office on November 21st, 2017. In spite of the requests being determined as not for a proper purpose, we maintain that this shows great support from the residents of Stafford. Number four, the developer has never provided a clear engineering plan for his proposal. Additionally, the following are lacking. No wetland study, including wetland and waterway boundaries. No studies have been provided for how much use the proposed course would receive. No traffic impact studies have been provided. Specifically, impacts to Wellington Avenue and Ice House Road are needed. No studies have been provided whether additional police services would be needed. No studies have been provided whether additional Department of Public Works services would be needed. Number five, development robs the property of future options. Leaving the property in as natural and undeveloped as possible state allows options in ways we can't even note for future generations.
Number six, the Conservation Commission has offered help in finding another more appropriate venue in town. We support Hyde Park, Olympic Field, and our school campus as better venues. Our reasons are as follows. Better road access, including safety vehicle access in case of emergency, better parking, better lighting, already developed areas for active sports. Additionally, in the school area, the school area has security cameras. Disc golf discs could be checked out of the library as outlined in one plan back in 2016, and disc golf could be introduced into our school curriculums. And finally, number seven, Dennis Pond is only open to Stafford residents.
We acknowledge that the Stafford Conservation Commission is an advisory commission, and we have no power to regulate and/or create policies. Additionally, we acknowledge that the Stafford Board of Selectmen, by town ordinance, is solely responsible for controlling and managing town property, including Dennis Pond. The above being said, we urge the Board of Selectmen to stand with us in protecting the property at Dennis Pond, the members of the Conservation Commission. And I forgot to say at the beginning that Brian is going to make a proposal for how, well, I'll just let you take the floor.
Sure. I propose that we create a disc golf committee, open to Stafford residents, to any Stafford residents. And this disc golf committee would explore interest in town for the activity. We would also study how other towns have handled disc golf, and hopefully come up with a good area other than Dennis Pond for disc golf, if the need does in fact exist. So, this would be a subcommittee of our committee.
I'm not sure.
Maybe, I don't know how this would work, that's up to manly. But I'm willing to chair the committee, and again, be open to anyone in town who's willing to help out. And we'll have, I'll have an agenda ready at our first meeting for what we need to accomplish.
Do either one of you want to say anything to that?
I just want to say, Neil, I think the original golf course was planned for the school, and it got shut down because of, basically, because of Sandy Hook issue, and do we feel that that's an option now? That Sandy Hook is now long past, and that people would be open to the idea of having disc golf at high school?
That's one area we would study, and maybe we would get in contact with school board members. Vernon has their disc golf course at the middle school.
Yeah, because it is a town, it's the school property, so they would have to be involved,
Agreed.
You know, in that.
And another concern the committee would address is, who would maintain such a course? Once it's in, who will be responsible in the long term? That's a concern we can look at as well.
And Arlene and I did visit Vernon's, Vernon's disc golf, and it is right next to the school property. And so, I mean, other towns are doing it right next to the school property, so we're wondering why it became an issue. I mean, we understand that it's right after Sandy Hook.
And that's something the committee will look at, of course, will look at all venues, absolutely.
Again, I ask, Neil, is Carl still interested after the last?
Yeah, I think, just talking to him, I was going to come to Mary when she got in, and we said, "Let's put it off a little bit," because she had many things on her first, both all of you guys' first agenda.
Okay.
He's got the money, he's ready to go, wants to go, you know, as soon as possible. And in addition, somebody, Mary gave me a number, somebody else to talk to.
She's right back there, Maureen.
Okay, thanks, I didn't get to you yet with a few things going on. But we do want to hear, you know, what her thoughts were. But Carl is more in the, "Let's do two things," you know, he has the money for Dennis Pond and wants to do it after six and seven years of planning and listening to you guys. We were going to bring that to you guys to see where you stood. So I guess, you know, my question is, they have, just to leave it alone, we've made all the changes, we thought, having listened to everybody on November or October 16th, just including coming in through modus, you know, stay up in that corner, stay off the slope and those kinds of things. I don't want to get too much into detail, but I know we've made changes, we just haven't presented it to you guys yet.
So that would be something that could be presented and maybe be an option for both sides?
I think we should have at least a summit where we, the pros and the con, you know, people that are, we have yet to really hear from the people that are very much for this. You know, they didn't have a chance to really view their opinions either. I, I'm still a little concerned when I see things like need for additional police. I feel like you're labeling the disc golfers.
No, we just don't feel there's been a grasp.
We're not labeling disc golfers per se as a crude bunch of people. We're not, I've played disc golf. We just want to make sure there are other viable options in town. It seems like Dennis Pond is the focus, is the focus, is the focus.
And maybe these guys.
And other sites have been sort of eh. So, and again, we want to gauge interest in town. You know, this will bring out-of-towners, which is fine. And again, right now Dennis Pond is for Stafford residents only. Would that change?
Does someone police the fact that there's only, do they do that now?
That's, that's pretty much.
I can honestly tell you, I know people from out of town that fish there.
Of course.
I'm sure.
Yeah, and it's.
It's just that there's a sign there that says it's for Stafford residents.
And I think they would still be.
Yeah, true, that's true.
It's probably because of liability, because shortly after the town acquired the property, there was a severe accident there, and the town was sued by an out-of-town resident. And I think there's a concern because of liability, because of the water bodies, and that's why we have the same restriction at Stafford.
And I was not here, these two can speak to about the different places that you had gone to and why they were not viable, or?
Well, yeah, I know, I know you looked at Hyde Park, and it just wasn't, you got that one big.
Seen a disc golf course, well, never seen, I've done two of them, but they're infiltrated right with buildings, and I've seen them on college campuses, they don't like, I have never seen them being damaged. I, they don't seem to me to.
Yeah, that's not our point. Our point is that there was a study done in 1999, and I'm sure that that, the ecology really hasn't changed that much on that hill, and that ERT report states that that hill should be left undeveloped, other than perhaps a loop trail, which one of our members isn't working on.
It's an erosion concern.
It's an erosion concern, there's a lot, there's a lot of drainage that's coming down that hill.
So when you cut a tree, well, and I don't think they would be cutting trees, but like I spoke to you, I know there's been trees cut down, have they been cut off of that hill to make the loop?
Those, the only trees that have been cut down is an infected hemlock on the west side of the pond, and there's been a couple of tree falls. I was with one of our members on Sunday afternoon, there were two trees, dead trees, that had fallen over the beaver trail, and we cut those.
We haven't removed any trees, just that fall.
Yeah, just dead fall that are blocking access for hikers on.
Yeah, and I think Carl needs to remove some, but he was talking about small, he's not looking at getting rid of it.
If they could just, without cutting you off, town, you're.
No, not at all.
The report, we keep going back, is 18 years old, so your, my daughter was born, she's in college, I know it's, maybe we're not going to spend money on new stuff, but the middle of that report, which I didn't have that day when I was in front of you, if you read, their number one suggestion is to cut down a bunch of trees on that. I mean, I don't know if you saw that, we talked about aphids, and I didn't know what was good or bad about aphids, but I did read the whole report after. That would be a hemlock issue with the woolly aphids. Their number one suggestion was to cut trees down to get rid of some, and, you know, I don't have all the biology in me to tell you, but that, from the 1999 report, is to cut more trees down so others grow, so. If we want to go back to a 18-year-old study and pick through it and see if we can come in, you know, we have listened, we were moving it up to that corner. And trying to approach with the heavy equipment to build the thing, you know, not come through the dam. And we do have, I don't know who did it, but 487 signatures from somebody, not submitted to the town perhaps, but people saying they want to play there.
I've heard that, I haven't seen.
You know, my biggest thing for when I was going door-to-door, when I was running for selectmen six years ago, was people saying we wanted this golf course. And I can't believe it's taken me this long to get with a guy with money to try to get it going wherever it is.
We're not opposed to disc golf.
You guys had your meeting June 2nd of 2016. That's correct. And we were here, and when we looked it up after, there was a quorum, there wasn't a quorum.
There was not a quorum.
There was not a quorum, so the suggestion, it showed up in the notes.
And I was relatively new as the chair, so I wasn't aware, I hadn't been made aware that.
Yeah, no, I understand it doesn't need to be excuses, but we're going on this petition to block it at Dennis Pond, it never really had a meeting, and we waited a year and a half because Carl was working on the one, and he's had them. But the biggest thing is, when I walk Dennis Pond, it's gorgeous, I mean, those rocks, it's beautiful, I've done it 10 times with my son. People that do the loop aren't going to see all the things we want them to see and bounce off, so. Well, I think the committee is going to offer transparency. So, whether, if we talk about Dennis Pond as a potential site, if we talk about the school property other side, we need transparency. We need people in town to know, here's what's going on with the committee. Instead of one meeting here on the 16th, another meeting here, people need to know the information. And I think the committee will offer that transparency.
I have a question. So, are you offering to chair it?
I'm happy to chair.
So, my only question is, to your own explanation, you're not really a disc golf guy, you've played.
I've played disc golf, I play ultimate frisbee, I think disc golf is great.
It's certainly not an expert in disc golf, like fair to say.
Is anyone an expert in disc golf? I don't know.
I would suggest that probably are, since Carl's been doing it for 20 something years, so.
Professionally?
I would pick one of those folks, makes a little more sense to at least chair the thing. We understand certainly your apprehensions, it's been very clear. The only issue I would have, and I don't argue with the fact that we need to address a bunch of these things, is when we went through this for the last couple of years, you bring up an issue, and then we resolve it, and you bring up an additional issue, and then we resolve it, and then there was an additional issue. So I see that you, good news is, you compiled all your issues, at least in one document now, so the question would be, if we took care of 95% of your issues, is it still, would it still be an okay spot? Ultimately, it's not, in your minds, is that pretty clear?
But again, you know, you're focused on Dennis Pond, and we're curious as to why Carl has picked Dennis Pond.
It seems like a place that could work.
Because he likes Dennis Pond personally, or this is what the committee should, you know, know about? We were going to the school, it was going to be built, he had designed it when I got on board. The shooting happened December 13th, five years ago. Pat said, "You can't come built here," so. Well, we could revisit that, that's five years ago. We got a printout of all the property that was over 18 acres, and we visited every spot in town that we own that had it, we went to the dam, we went to Olympic Field. I think I mentioned, I saw Carl fall down the hill for the first time, and he's a billy goat walking in the woods, it's just too steep, honestly. What was too steep, I'm sorry? Olympic Stadium. It's too steep, and Dennis Pond is certainly much steeper.
I don't think he's talking about the park behind there, up into the woods, right?
Yeah, if you go from the football field cemetery, there's rocks that have crumbled down, and they're all piled up, I mean, I don't know how you get there.
The disc golf courses I have seen are not out in the open, in like a field or in a park, they go up into the woods, and I'm, I want to speak.
So, Neil, you guys produced, you know, offered the school campus, Hyde Park, and Olympic Field, how did he pick Dennis Pond? Well, after going through all these places several times, and we did go out, we thought the dam is way out there, it's not the greatest place to park, I wanted it near downtown, so people, kids, when I went door-to-door in the borough, instead of hanging out at the bridge, could walk up there and use it. Originally, I thought the library was perfect because you could get discs, and I don't have a problem talking with Maureen, and hopefully the new superintendent, maybe we do go there. But again, in addition, I think Carl's willing to do both. Now, why Dennis Pond, it's gorgeous, he does golf courses all over the world, he wants one that's fairly small, that kids can use, that you can take your parents and grandparents and teach them the sport, and it's, it's a nice place to go, you know, that's, that's why.
You know, I mean, is he willing to revisit the school because now there's a different superintendent?
I called them the other day and told them, I hadn't got to her yet, but we had a new superintendent they wanted me to talk to, and not an interim, I guess.
Yes.
See what he thought, and if he was willing to the next step, who's the new person? Again, as far as that meeting went, you know, you guys brought up a bunch of challenges, and we had you say June 2nd you were going to find a new place for us, and at that meeting, alls I heard was, here's why you can't go to Dennis Pond, so. We were ready to come in January when Mary got elected, you know, with the new administration to say, "Let's get this thing going." She asked, "Talk to a few more people, make sure we're on board," so.
I did, it's not our intent to just like shove it down your throat, we have to have some kind of peacemaking, but it can't go on for another four years or two years, and I know.
We agree, we're happy to help, obviously, and that's why I think the committee is very important.
But are you happy, I believe this is what Tony was saying. Are you happy to help get it out of there, or what if everything coincides and this is where we really think? Like if he shows you, I'm sorry, when he shows you the other way that they want to go in, and the other way that they want to build it in there, if that is not going to be in any way interfering with anything at Dennis Pond, are you willing to do that? Or are you willing, I don't want to be rude, but are you willing to have these groups come together as long as it goes the way where you want it to go?
I'm willing to see all cards on the table, I'm willing to see plans for Dennis Pond as an option, I'm willing to see plans for the school, I'm willing to see plans for Hyde Park, Olympic Park.
But we are a land use commission, and the Environmental Review Team report was done by a team of seven scientists and land use experts.
Is that the one Neil just alluded to before, where in the middle it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we are concerned about it being placed in the most suitable place, you know, for land usage, and also for traffic, for public safety.
So, again, my question, I'll go back to the same question. So, let's assume just for a moment, hypothetically, 95% of the issue's traffic, lighting, police presence. Ultimately, the viability of the location to your argument is, because of that study, it's not proper, and it's potentially dangerous to place it there, is that fair to say?
On the east bank.
So, somewhere else at Dennis Pond, it could work?
If, if the soils are, I mean, there is some land on the west bank of Dennis Pond, but it's a problem, there's a problem with soil erosion. Dennis Pond is a very fragile ecosystem, it's been there.
I understand, that's why I'm using your own study for your defense, so the question is, do you ultimately feel that it shouldn't go there regardless, and this study proves that fact, regardless of whatever else you solve?
That, that's my, my belief.
At least get to the endpoint where, if you really think it can't work there, and that's where you're working from, then at least we know where you're working from.
And also, like, like, you know, like it says, the studies have not been provided, we've never really seen, you know, much of a plan, you know, I heard that Carl had a little piece of paper.
But again, your argument is, environmentally, it's the wrong place, that's your argument. Regardless of, if you've got every single, again, remember my hypothetical, 95% of it's solved, he does every single plan, he maps it out, we get the lighting determined, we get the traffic study, we get all that accomplished, ultimately though, it's not the right place for you guys, really is what you're saying. Yes or no?
Yes, based on that.
Oh, okay, well, that's fair, I mean, you know, I'm trying, Neil, you're down, but I'm saying, hey, if that's your argument, that's okay, and again, I'm not 100% for or against it, I think it's a great thing for town, the question is, is it truly environmentally the wrong place for it to be? I don't know that that's true, I don't know it's not true, but I don't know it's 100% true.
But we don't know, we also don't feel like enough has been put into the studies for, you know, saying it's going to be okay. You know what, you know what I'm saying?
Fair enough, fair enough, sure.
Like, to show us that, that, okay, there's going to be enough structure to the tees that we're not going to have erosion, that we're not going to have difficulty with the baskets, that we're not going to have, you know, we haven't been shown that kind of thing. And so, I mean, that is kind of where we're standing now, I mean, I'm certainly, you know, we, we see, you know, one conversation I had in researching this was with somebody from the D E P, and he said, he said, "We're for disc golf in the state parks," because it gets people outside.
Sure.
And so, and I mean, one of our, one of our mission statements is to get people outside. So, we, we are supporting it from that point of view, to get people outside. We just feel like, we would really like to see the school area revisited again, because, you know, for one thing, you know, it's been some years, we see that Taland and Vernon are right next to school areas, and, you know, and you, you could support the disc golf by having usage at the lib, you know, check things out at the library, you could actually get it into the school curriculum, you know, so I think that, from that point of view, and plus, you know, there's security cameras up, there's already security cameras up there at the school, so.
And you can make a very challenging course at the school campus, you have woods, you have hills, you have all of that.
It's a great course.
Yeah, but that would be a tremendous course.
It's better, challenged, more challenged, this one's more for the kids in the neighborhoods, wherever the direction I'm pointing out there, is, you know, hopefully the kids that are here can walk to that, where the school, you can kind of get there, but it's.
And Wellington Avenue ends with a sidewalk, and then the road curves and gets narrower, where downtown, plenty of sidewalks, Hyde Park, Olympic Park, you could literally walk, you could play a couple holes at Hyde, walk to Olympic, back and forth, that's safe.
Now, one of the things that, I don't know where it was going to go at the high school, but you're talking about going up into the woods at the high school, and I know there's wetlands, there's water.
Library, it has woods.
It would be, it's wet, yeah.
Oh, that is, okay.
The solar field.
But there's ecosystems there also that would possibly be impacted, so is that going to be a concern?
That's, the studies need to be done as to soil erosion ability, you know, how stable are the soils?
But that's not, that's not, well, the school grounds aren't conservation grounds, technically, we're not stewards of the school, so.
Except that, we don't want more soil erosion. Yeah, but that's part of our mission is.
So, okay, I'm sorry.
That's fair.
You guys, they're wanting to talk.
But I don't know if they get the comment. Uh, but I don't know if they get the comment, I don't, I don't, I mean, so I mean, I know it's a passionate subject, but it, it'll draw in that longer, not much longer.
Because it's on the agenda, I think so.
Okay.
So my concern, uh, when I was selecting was putting a, uh, carport to charge, uh, vehicles in the back of the middle school. And the concern clearly was to have traffic at a school, uh, facility, which I think is a bad idea. So, there may be disc golf course close to schools, I would suggest they were probably put in there prior to Sandy Hook. So, the issue I would have, uh, is a couple of them. One, I don't wanna be on the board of selectmen that determines, uh, the downfall of Dennis Pond. So, if it's anywhere close for us to destroy it from a disc golf course, I, I, I'm not gonna be part of that. So, there's no doubt we all care enough that we wanna look into in great detail. The, the fact is though, if you're talking about Hyde Park and Olympic Park, that doesn't have a physical rule and it's wide open and you're gonna have these metal baskets in the middle of the park? I would suggest it's probably a bad idea, right, because we have two ball fields and we got the place skate, and we got skateboard park. I would suggest that that's probably ne- never gonna work and it doesn't make sense. Olympic Field, very much more similar idea, you have lacrosse that uses that now, football uses that now, you have basketball courts. I don't know where you're gonna put that, but I understand looking for other alternative areas and I'm all for the idea. And I'm also all for getting some of these things determined that is the environmental impact the main issue? And the removal of twenty odd trees is what Carl mentioned at the time, and then the potential, uh, development of these baskets and the concrete pads. What's the impact on the environment? I think that could be pretty, it's information I, I know is probably out there and Carl could probably collect that. So, your suggestions I, I would certainly think are great, um, but I just wanna know if it's, if it's not Dennis Pond, I get it. And it's not Dennis Pond for your mind, but let's not throw these other things out here that kinda muddy the waters. Um, because now all of a sudden, if we do parking, we do the pad study, we do the traffic pattern study and we potentially spend money to get those things done and come to you and then you're like, man, yeah, no, sorry, you did everything, we're looking for.
Are you gonna do that for the school campus or just Dennis Pond? So if we're looking at alternative sites, we have to do studies for other sites, not just Dennis Pond?
Well, I think that's, that's why, that's why Brian's suggestion is that a committee be formed. And, you know, and, and that, you know, to come together, you know, to bring together both the people who want disc golf and people who wanna see protection, you know, and, and like you, you said, put out, let's put all the cards on the table. And, um.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's arguing against that.
I don't think anybody would argue against that, except there has to be open lines on both sides. So if everybody comes to a meeting and says, that is the place we wanna look at, that's where we, and then what? Then it's another six years down the road, so that's where I'm, but I love to see.
I don't think six years, we could expedite this, expedite, it's six years is a long time.
It has been.
And I live in a home like that, I'm not advanced in the traffic situation potentially, you know, I'm a quarter mile away, so.
I, I mean, for us, that really wasn't the top of our list, the traffic, we've done, we've gathered that from that October meeting. Like the people who are residents, who got up and said, what about the traffic? What about, you know, access on that Ice House Road, you know, you know, and that's where we, you know, said, oh, yeah, you know, that is another concern and we our group and doesn't feel like that's enough.
Can you just recognize him, because I wanna hear if there's anything else I wanted to follow up on, is that okay?
Panel, you like, it's probably got its own opinion, but with all due respect, bringing up at the comment portion.
We don't have a comment.
It's a special meeting.
So, the, um, so really, what do you wanna do as a committee, is that, can we take that from this? I think that's a very smart idea, right? You're gonna form it or it's?
Would it be, I'm, that is a question I have, would it be a subcommittee of conservation, would it be a subcommittee of the board of selectmen or?
I, I would think, I mean, I, I don't know, if you can, yeah, they can create, and you can also create your own, maybe a couple people from your board, get together with maybe Neil and a couple people and get your own group going?
One, one place I wanna talk to is Southern Valley, they have a disc golf course and I guess it's doing very well.
Neil, you get Carl and a couple other folks.
Other places to talk to.
They grab a couple of folks and you guys kinda sit, even before we do an advisory committee.
Right, I would have them sit and see.
Kinda powwow and come back and say, hey, we're miles apart and, you know, we gotta do something else.
Yep.
Or maybe you guys sit down together and something come good of it and we move on, you know, I hate to wait.
I know, and maybe originally, it doesn't have to be with Carl, maybe you know some people that you would get together if you're willing and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry. I know you're frustrated because it's been a long.
I'm not just frustrated, but, you know, I got the Blues Fest going, I'm a treasurer, I'm starting baseball, you know, so there's a lot of.
Or you do have a couple.
I haven't had time to call more.
I know.
Give up your job.
I know, I know, stop pulling teeth, I got plenty of time.
But that would be the best thing.
So I don't wanna say I'm not in there, but just what I wanna bring up was when I was selectman, we went through the, uh, I won't get it right, but the zoning commission, we got it passed through there, and then me, DJ and Rich voted to do it at Dennis Pond. And I thought with Beth, I was ready to put this letter out to the neighbors that we might hear a little noise and, and, um, they said, oh, you didn't ask the, uh, your uncle or Barry?
Wetlands.
Wetlands commi-, so that held us up, so then we got him to go and he said, yeah, so then we moved it, so we've done all these things that you're asking.
So there has been a wetland study.
Uh, yeah, and it's been approved. And then, you know, kinda when I was leaving after four years and said, you know, I don't wanna do this anymore, I've had so much fun. Uh, I said to Rich, you know, what's the bottom line? And basically, they had three hunting permits, that they had people hunting at Dennis Pond, that they didn't wanna give up, so I could put it I mean, kinda was the delay game for four years for that one reason. Now with the different administration that was there previously, we're ready to rock and here comes, you know, another administration we have to approve it by, so. We can put a little bit of time and, and I do apologize not to check with her because she, Maureen has, uh, you know, some questions I heard through the grapevine, I do wanna address those. But I'm not looking to start another bunch of years of going through all these steps again.
It won't be years, I know there's a, there's a desire.
Yeah, and Carl's got money, but if he finds a house soon somewhere else, he just happened to move back, you know, when his mom passed away and, uh, he's leaving. And maybe with all his money, and he is willing, I talked to Patty Kritzman, if they will approve it at the school, Carl is willing to do both. You know, and that's a hell of a commitment, once he's already said he'll put up eighteen thousand. So if you know Carl at all, I gotta really call him up and when I call him, it's two hours of talking about stuff, which I don't have, you know.
So are you saying you don't think that this would?
I would be more than willing to do something one time pretty soon and get it all out there, but I'm not looking to start another committee to go through everything.
One, right, I would have to say to one or two meetings, that's a people, I would say, try not to, I would get a couple people from the, maybe the conservation commission and then maybe get a couple people so that it's not, does that make sense?
It's open to anybody, it's fine.
What is the, you mentioned this earlier tonight, the, um, the superintendent, you said there's.
There's an interim superintendent, he was here to march, but they did just make an announcement, they hired last week a new superintendent. So, the interim will stay here until March. And I, I can't remember the exact date, but no, he won't make a decision and so the new person will not start until, I don't know. The one day that the interim has to leave, the next day is the day the new one starts, so.
What, do you have any idea, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm doing.
Uh, do you have any idea where on the property at the school complex you're talking about at all?
No, no.
I thought it was behind the middle school.
Maybe where the solar panels are somewhere.
Because they were talking about.
It goes up where the solar panels are now, um, I had looked at going all the way over to where the ambulance, uh, place had been. At the time, it was the ambulance place when Carl designed it, but.
Down the hill?
Yeah, up, up around, behind the baseball, mostly where the solar panels were, in, in towards Olympic Field.
So can it be really done now that was on solar, that the solar field is in there?
I would venture that Carl can do anything from, I've seen him modify Dennis Pond, you think there's no plan, but he's done it four times, he's walked eighteen holes excitedly. We've walked eighteen holes again, we've walked.
And you have another version of it going in another way.
Yeah, and now, and we work with Modus now to see if we can come in through there, you know, we listen to you guys and we've modified it, so I wanna tell you that, that's what I was gonna bring to you. I thought it was January sixteenth was gonna be the next meeting, but.
The, uh, I'm sorry, so the, uh, the access would be through the baseball field parking lot, which we have a gate on, it's always locked except for.
Uh. More so behind the middle school. I have the, when I met Carl, he, he handed me this thing, it's sitting on my desk at home and I could go get it, you know, but I didn't know that was going on.
I mean, I know there's a layout of what we got up there and that's, that's a locked facility, uh, certainly by a high school, can't make any sense. If you're behind the middle school, absolutely not, you got the solar fields, so.
But it was Switch Clark, the chair of the energy advisory board, who announced at that October, uh, forum at the community center that the solar arrays only took up so many acres and that there was something like forty-two acres still available for, uh, use, uh, for disc golf, for other.
Well, there is, physically, right, but I would suggest we don't wanna get anywhere near that, that's like, again, secured, you spent seventeen million dollars for solar projects.
Yeah.
I would suggest we, we shouldn't get anywhere near it.
But what he was saying is, there's parking up there, you don't have to get right near it, but that can be an accessway to this forty-two acres of available property. And the parking, the parking, he said, is very secure because there are also security cameras facing out.
So you mean you use the middle school, school parking area?
Parking lot behind the middle school, uh, at, for, and this would be used like, like what they do at Center Middle School in Vernon. Um, the, the Epper Hill, uh, course is available after school and on weekends. And also, I think it's available for the students as part of their phys ed curriculum during the school.
Neil, you said the, the, the course came down almost over that old ambulance building, is?
At the cemetery?
Did it come down that far?
Uh. I know, um.
I'm just wondering if you could access it through that parking lot, you know?
Yeah, I know, some of the holes I walked were, were like the higher part above the baseball field, up behind the middle school, and there was.
That's the cemetery, cemetery.
Probably doing that. Yeah, they would have, you'd have to build a road from Olympic.
It's a, something up there like a, a well or there's something up there, I remember walking by that and it wrapped around.
Again, I think the premise is clear that, uh, you want a little more work done on, on the, on the environmental impact, should of course go there. But really, that's what your major concern is like ours is what, because nobody wants to ruin Dennis Pond, right? Right, we're very clear, so I think that's what we need to look at most, the, the traffic, uh, the road access, those things I think you certainly keep careful. Uh, but I think it's the environmental impact to that area which everybody's the most concerned about.
That's our number one.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm okay with that, because I am too, because again, I like the place.
But I mean, and we're also, you know, we also, uh, you know, the residents who showed up in the October meeting were clearly concerned about traffic, you know, and that is, the access Ice House Road is very narrow. Um, Wellington Avenue is, is windy and fairly narrow too, you know, um, and we have a member who lives there now and who and, and one who did live there, but now she, she moved, so, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not discounting that, um, but as an example, Highland Terrace, those folks, uh, once you started Blues Fest and everything else. Raj, you live up there, I mean, he's got a traffic, his traffic's unbelievable and I don't think anybody kinda, hey, is it okay if we use this road for traffic? So I, I appreciate what you're saying, I do, and it is a small road, again, Ice House Road is maybe a concern for the exit onto Wellington Ave and the entrance, so certainly that's a concern.
It's not a two-way road, if you wanna leave, someone has to pull over or back out.
Correct.
Agree.
Yeah, that, that's an issue.
True.
And that's why I.
And it's, it's true for you guys as well, right, but I mean, you hope, because I know you have an idea for this handicap, uh, fishing dock, correct? So you want more use of the road, you wanna draw activity there, yeah? So again, we have to look at that regardless of whatever the topic is, that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good idea, and we need to put this together and another reason why we're gonna look at it closer.
But can we, can we leave this, where maybe Neil and, would you, at least one meeting, you know, get together one meeting and see
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe.
After a board of selectmen meeting. And then come back to us and let's figure out where we can.
Stick around after, something where I'm already here and with other people would be really nice.
I know you've poured hard on this, Neil, and, and I support you a hundred percent, I want you to, I want you to succeed with this. If it's not Dennis Pond, then it needs to be somewhere, or we're gonna lose, uh, uh.
We certainly want to see it succeed too.
Yeah, I don't wanna lose the investment, I mean, we get, somebody wants to invest in our town, I'm really concerned with making him so frustrated he walks away. We seem to be doing that over and over in this town, we frustrate people that wanna invest, so.
And we have a lot of other towns that are doing this, because they do see that it's a benefit to older, younger, it's, it's all.
Right, it's a balance.
If I see a disc golf course, my car, it summers, I will really not be a happy person, so, and, and I say that in all seriousness.
Yeah, no, he's discounting the hundred and forty-seven signatures, uh, believe me, if you, if you sent it my way, I probably would send it. Uh, because I'm concerned either way, and I think we are, so let's be very clear, uh, that we are all concerned with making sure that we've done everything possible uh, without spending another six years, that's pretty clear.
We're just looking for the most suitable place.
Sure.
You know, Stafford is the third largest town in the state, we have a lot of land here. You know, there may be a, a landowner out there willing to donate. That's what happened with the dog park.
Right, again, the concept though is to try to get it to close to downtown to get people to be able to go there. So that's kinda the concept.
Yeah, just the whole idea of Tallinn, I had hip surgery, that's all I could do is disc golf with my kids, they could drive because they had a permit and we went to Tallinn Pizza every time after. I mean, that's what I was seeing this as, people came to our town, they played disc golf, they came to one of them many restaurants and hung out. And as the selectmen, we were trying at the time to make the downtown area what it's getting to be now, um, six years ago, that made a lot of sense.
Pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah, it's going in that direction, that would just be another one. I mean, I put in a lot of work to get the amphitheater, it's sixty-seven thousand dollars, we had to have five Blues Fest and donations and it's there and hopefully for seventy-five years, that's there. That's what Carl would like to do with his money, is give us eighteen thousand and in seventy-five years, he's gone, but people have, maybe it's the Carl Memorial Tro, you know, golf course or something, but. Yeah, he grew up here, he came back from New Jersey kinda to do that, so.
So I think that's where we, you know, but I, we're all in agreement, we wanna have some kind of, uh.
Next, next selectman meeting. Double check that date, do you know your next meeting, is it still this month or?
Yeah, do you have the calendar for us?
This is our, this is our second meeting, nothing until February.
February, like second.
First Tuesday in February.
Three weeks.
So we need to meet before that or?
It's sort of Friday.
Yeah, because we don't wanna keep it moving, I think we're probably gonna have to make some kind of a decision at some point.
I used to say that there was people, there were people on the commission who said like, oh, let's just wait until they do something. And I said, no, we're not gonna be reactive, we're going to be like, let's do this, let's put all of our points together.
People limiting it, cars in the back being.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
About on the testing order of school, it has not.
Can you file a calendar for the year until the end of December?
I can't even ask that question. All the meetings this month, correction, all the commissions have been special. Mine, mine have to be special too, because I do, and I get it like twenty-nine days in a day.
Everybody, we're all special.
Yeah, I don't know, we're all special. Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, number five, Stafford Housing Authority, Maureen Marie.
I'm the executive director, my name is Anne Marie Perron of the Stafford Housing Authority. Um, I wanted to take a few minutes just to talk about small cities, community development block grants. Um, as I saw, you just put your RFP out to get a consultant for it and we are hoping that we can be considered for, to be considered as a recipient of those monies. The housing authority has a property, uh, eight great park apartments that was built, I believe, from sixty-five through seventy-six, I believe, in three stages. And we are looking at, um, doing some ADA compliance work and some roof work. Um, the property last roofs were done about twenty-two, twenty-five years ago, depending on the area in the property. And, um, and again, we're so not cheap, as we all know, um, we are probably gonna be having to go down to the plywood. From what we can see, we are gonna have to go down to the plywood, I don't say maybe, we are gonna have to go down to plywood. So, it's gonna be an expensive prospect and we would like to do it. What we are hoping to do is to use the small cities monies, first of all, because, um, if you look at the application for small cities, you get extra points if you use it for affordable housing, which we are, and if you use it for affordable housing, it's in the state sponsored portfolio, which we are. Um, I believe it's five and a half extra points you can get for those two criteria. Um, I know in the past, the town has applied for it, I believe you have a rehab program, I'm not up to date on what that is. But in the last two years that you applied for it, you were not granted the money. But in the last two years that you applied for it, you were not granted the monies. And in talking to different people in DOH, which is where the monies are decided, they said that they really wanted to go towards affordable housing. They wanted to go towards, again, the state-sponsored portfolio, because as you can see from the governor, he has put quite a bit of money into that state-sponsored portfolio. So I'm not gonna keep you, because I know you guys have gone a little over, but just that we be considered for that money. I'll be going on the twenty-second, which I believe is Monday, to the meeting just to find out what changes have been made since the last time I went to small cities, which was probably about three or four years ago. And then hopefully by then, I think we'll have a, I guess, I don't know when the GARP team comes through.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we'll be able to be considered for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we have an authorization for the resolution for DEEP. We have a, there's, out on Old Springfield Road, it is state-owned land, but we have a building out there that I guess years past the town built, but it was put on the state property. It's out by the, um, the dam. I guess it's the Dry Dam out there. And they've always let us, been there in the past, we've always let us use it for storing different equipment. They wanna just have a more formal, um, agreement, I guess, to store our stuff in there. So.
Make a motion.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll.
You want me to read it?
Sure.
All right. Authorizing resolution, resolve that Merimita first selection of town of Stafford is hereby authorized to use, execute, and enter into, on behalf of the town of Stafford, a special use license with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection DEEP to store town-owned public works equipment at the barn located on a portion of DEEP property known as Whitney Dam slash Furnish Brook Flood Control Area. So that basically is a motion.
Yeah, I guess we've used it before, and they just wanna have a more formal.
Sure, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the next one is the Board of Finances a letter requesting to waive the bidding ordinance for the auditor. Toby or John, do either one of you wanna read that? I'm so sorry.
Uh, town of Stafford Board of Selectmen, as Board of Finance Chair, I'm requesting a waiver of bidding and purchasing policy ordinance eleven dash five for the annual audit of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year. The meeting on January eighth, two thousand eighteen, a motion was made and seconded to appoint O'Connell Pace and Company as the auditors for the annual audit for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Should you have any concerns, please contact me at eight six oh six eight four three four three seven. Thank you for this, for cooperation on this matter. Sincerely, Jane Slater.
Who's Jane Slater from the Board of Finance.
Board of Finance. So basically, this is just to keep them for another year.
Right, they're using O'Connell and Pace right now. And so they just wanted, we can waive, they, you can put it out to bid for who you wanna pick for it, and they would like them to continue for the next year. So the Board of Selectmen can actually waive that, and we can, um, we can waive the bidding process. So.
Yeah, the, so the background real quick is, the auditor we were using, in essence, quit. So we were caught in the lurch. And this company, O'Connell Pace and Company, used to do our audits, so they jumped in, and that's why we explained the process. They use them, they knew it, which was great. We didn't have any options, so it kind of worked out, so they have.
And I would like to finish and see it through, so.
I have no problem with that.
So instead of putting it out to bid, we just have to, like, to know whether we wanna waive it. Do I have a motion?
So, okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Both curies, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Um, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.